Here.
Mr. McCone. Mr. Desmond?
Here.
Mr. Eisenbacher?
Here.
Mr. Neal?
Here.
Mr. Lambert?
Here.
Mr. Sanzico?
Here.
So in a second, I'm going to call on Vice Chairman Eisenbacher to read our rules and procedures for this board, for the public watching at home, and those are here in attendance. But before I do that, I'll just quickly introduce everyone up here at the head table. So to my left, your far right is Mr. Lambert, and then to his, next to him is Vice Chairman David Eisenbacher. This is Mr. Sanzico, who's a member of this board but also a liaison from the Planning Commission. I'm Glenn Clark, the chairman, and to my right is Mr. Desmond, and then there at the end of this section of the table is Mr. Neal. Then over on the side is Mr. Evans, who represents the Troy City Administration, and he will serve the board tonight as the representative from the city administration, as I stated. To his right is Ms. Dufresne, who is an Assistant City Attorney with the City of Troy, and she will serve as the board's legal advisor here this evening. I'd like to call on Vice Chairman Eisenbacher.
The zoning board of appeals is a group of seven of your neighbors appointed by city council to decide on requests for variances and other matters that are brought before them. A variance is a relaxation of the literal provisions of the zoning ordinance. Petitioners must indicate a hardship or practical difficulty with the land that would warrant the granting of the variance. Procedure: The board will hear the items in the order they appear on the agenda. When an item is called, the chairman will verify that the petitioner is present. Then the city administration will summarize the facts of the case. The petitioner will then be given an opportunity to address the board to explain the justification for the action requested. After the petitioner makes their presentation and answers any questions that the board may have, the chairman will open the public hearing. Any person wishing to speak on the request should raise their hand, and when recognized by the chairman, come up to the podium and sign in on the sheet provided. The speaker should identify themselves with name and address, indicate their relationship to the property in question, for example, next door neighbor, lived behind the property, et cetera, and state whether they are in favor of or against the variance request and give reasons for their opinion. Comments must be directed through the chairman. Comments should be kept as brief as possible and closely pertaining to the matter under consideration. Only one person will be recognized by the chairman to speak at one time. At the conclusion of public comments, the chairman will close the public hearing. Once the public hearing is closed, no other public comment will be taken unless in response to a specific question by a member of the board. The board will then make a motion to approve, deny, or postpone the request. In order for the requests to pass, a minimum of four votes are needed. If the request is not granted, the applicant has the right to appeal the board's decision to the Oakland County Circuit Court.
Thank you, Vice Chairman Eisenbacher. Now onto item number two, which is related to the approval of the minutes from the June 21st meeting. Are there any questions on the minutes, or would a member like to make a motion? Mr. Lambert?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the minutes for the June meeting.
Motion, Mr. Sanzico second it. Motion and second of support for the motion to approve the minutes. Any debate or questions? Hearing none. Mr. Evans, I believe we're prepared to vote.
Mr. Desmond?
Yes.
Mr. Eisenbacher?
Yes.
Mr. Neal?
Yes.
Mr. Lambert?
Yes.
Mr. Sanzico?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes. Motion is approved. Now we move on to item number three, related to the approval of the agenda. Are there any questions or concerns about the agenda that has been presented to the board by staff? Hearing none, we will move on to the hearing of cases, which in this case is a hearing of a case. Item number A is David Pardoun, 1321 Boyd Street. This has been presented to us before, and I'll let Mr. Evans explain to the public and to the board what we are looking at here.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As printed in the agenda, this is a variance request for David Pardoun of 1321 Boyd in order to split a parcel of land into two parcels, a 305.5 square foot variance from the 7,500 square foot minimum lot size. I'd like to direct everybody's attention to the monitors at the front of the room. This is a map of the neighborhood. The subject property is located north of Big Beaver and east of Rochester Road. It's circled there in the map. This is a close-up aerial of the neighborhood, and the subject property 1321 Boyd is outlined in red. The property to the north is the Baker Middle School and the International Academy. The property immediately to the west is the driveway to the school district property, and all surrounding property is zoned and used for single-family residential purposes. There's an existing house on the property now, and also an existing garage. This is a survey of the subject property as it exists, Lot 28 and 29 of the subdivision, and the applicant proposes to split that parcel into two equal-sized parcels. And I've identified that split here on the red line, basically right down the middle. Now, when new properties in this zoning district are created, the minimum lot size is 7,500 square feet for any new lots. Now, the proposal will create two lots measuring 7,194.5 square feet, so in order to proceed with the lot split, the applicant is requesting a variance of 305.5 square feet. As part of the application, the applicant's demonstrated some photos of homes that he would assure would be indicative of the style and/or size built on the property. I'll turn it back over to the board for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. Any questions or comments related to what Mr. Evans has presented to us? Mr. Lambert?
Chairman, actually, this is probably a question for you, if, once again, we're lacking a full board. I'm wondering if the appropriate thing to do when Mr. Pardoun comes up to state the case is to ask him if he wants to postpone another month again.
Absolutely. We'll give him that, the right to request that, and then the board can consider where we're at, at that point.
Thank you.
And of course, I'm sure you'll remind me if I forget to ask. Any other members of the board on this item? Seeing none, we can call the petitioner forward, and, Mr. Pardoun, as Mr. Lambert said, you have the right to request that the board put this on the table until the next meeting, where perhaps we will have a full board, or we may not. There's never a guarantee. We clearly tonight do not. We're missing one member, so we'll let you maybe address that first and then go into your application.
Yeah, that's fine. We'll make a decision today.
Okay.
Good evening. Let me start out with a new proposal.
I'm sorry, could you please identify yourself?
Oh, I'm sorry, Dave Pardon.
Thank you, Pardon. Okay.
Yes. Let me start out with a new proposal. I couldn't get the school district to reply in time for the meeting. I'm proposing I install the sidewalk on my property so there's no undecided issues if it can be installed or not. I'll install it if the split is granted. Complaining about the traffic on the streets, there's traffic everywhere. I live down the street from elementary school. It gets hectic at times, but we deal with it. It's life. I don't, you know, people want everything opened up. I don't know what else to tell them. Neighbors use a property for overflow parking spots because the driveways are too narrow. Is that really a legitimate argument? My driveways will have double-wide drives, so we won't have that problem. Mrs. Lottie brought up Orpington Street. She doesn't, she doesn't want the street to look like that. I have some news for her. It looks better than the street they're on now. The homes, the new homes and the old homes, they look great. I can remember when there was an old block building on that street at one time. Things have changed. My brother and I built three houses on that street back in the early '80s, 2267, 2255, and 2237. And we lived in them. The difference between Orpington and Boyd Street is that Orpington had one acre lots, and it was a lot easier with the big depths to go ahead and develop that area. Boyd Street doesn't have that luxury, so we try, so we try to work with what we have that's existing. You can't turn the clocks back, so we move forward. The sidewalk will extend 120 feet alongside the lot line to the ditch in the rear. The kids would be able to cross closer to the school instead of on the busy intersection where there's, where there's only one road to crosses, which is 120 feet closer to the They're all talking about the kids being in danger because of the traffic. I'm bringing safety to the kids that have to walk to school by getting them off the street and onto a sidewalk for an extra 120 feet out of harms way. Just because someone's allowed a side entrance and exit through a planted building lot that was poorly designed years ago, and I'm presenting a solution to make it a little safer if the split is allowed. It might not be the best solution, but it's moving in the right direction. The people that are complaining about the project are the same people that want it fixed. You can't fix a problem if you do nothing. I'm at least trying to make the area safer than it is. All I'm asking for is a minimum concession on a lot split that's only 300 square feet short of the new minimum building, buildable, lot sizes, which match most of the lot sizes on the street already. All I'm trying to do is blend the new houses with the old. In closing, I think you need to look close, look at this close. I'm asking for a lot split that if someone is driving and walking down the street, they wouldn't be able to see these lots. They're short 300 square feet. The lots are planted in 1930. They are what they are. I'm committing to a sidewalk to make the area safer than it's been in years if the split is allowed. It's actually a win-win for everybody. It makes it safer, safer than it is now, putting the kids on a five-foot wide sidewalk for 120 feet off a busy street away from the cars turning and passing in front of the existing driveway to the school. We can get all of this for a minor lot split approval. How can it, how can that go wrong? I mean, the hardship on this, I think, is that whole area right there is a hardship. I mean, you got, you got a road coming through the neighborhood. It's, it's, it's existing. It's there, and, I mean, I'm just trying to do the right thing for it, and it's all in your hands, guys. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any questions?
Sure. Let's see if there's questions for this petitioner. You can have a seat. Thank you so much. So at this point in time, I'm going to call Vice Chairman Eisenbacher in a second, but we're going to first have the public hearing on this matter. So I'm going to open the public hearing related to this variance request and ask anybody who would like to speak to come forward to identify yourself and then to address the board. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Diana Lottie. Live at 1308 Boyd, which is directly across the street from the school driveway. I would like to begin tonight to thank the Board of Zoning Appeals for all of your time and consideration it has taken to review the variance request and also the objections to granting of this variance. This has required viewing documents dating back to August of 2004, March 2015, and now since April of 2016. Regarding the variance request to split a parcel into two parcels requiring a 305.5 square foot variance for each lot, my husband and I continue to be against granting of the variance. There appears to be no hardship with the land itself, and thus no grounds for granting a variance, and as was said previously, it would take a conforming parcel and make two non-conforming parcels. The offer of Dave Pardon to put a sidewalk along the school driveway, also known as Lot 27, was a nice gesture, but it falls short of really protecting the children and others since it stops too far away from the actual school parking lot. It puts the children and any walkers right out into that area where it is the narrowest and difficult for two vehicles even to pass one another. And it isn't really relevant to approving or denying the variance request. At the June Board of Zoning Appeals meeting, it took only one vote to deny the variance request for 1078 Boyd, which would have split a parcel into two parcels requiring a 300 square foot variance for each lot. This appears to be the same type of variance request that is before you again this evening. Didn't this set a precedence to also deny the variance request for 1321 Boyd? Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address the board on this matter?
I guess I suppose I want to give you that.
You can come forward, and if you could please hand them to Mr. Lambert.
Just what was there, so you could see what was driving up and down the streets and houses.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else? Close the public hearing at this time and call on Mr. Vice Chairman Eisenbacher to address the board on any communications related to this matter, to the board's attention.
Okay. On the table, we have one from 1321 Boyd, which would be one of the side neighbors, I believe, based on the address.
1281.
I'm sorry. 1281. I looked at the top. 1281, which is one of the side, side neighbors directly to the west, requesting that it not be approved on the basis of two-story homes would be out of place and that they're mostly ranch houses in the area. I know there were requests in our last packets, and I could not find them in the short time that I have. Were they in the?
Previous packet, because they were received.
The new agenda? Or were they just in the previous?
Mr. Evans?
Mr. Clark, you are correct. They're, they're received at the previous meetings and brought into the record at that time.
And shared with the board at the time, and the public. So that's everything that we have. So we have communications over the course of several months because this issue has been dangling between a couple of different board meetings.
Yes.
So at this point in time, Vice Chairman Eisenbacher, the photos that the petitioner shared are right there, so if you can review those, and then I'll hop skip over Mr. Sanzico then to me. Any, Mr. Lambert, yes?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Can I ask Ms. Dufresne about Mr. Pardon's offer to build a sidewalk on his own property? What are the ramifications of that as far as, you know, right-of-way? How does that work?
Yeah, I mean, I don't really have a good answer for you, Mr. Lambert. I don't know if our engineering department has reviewed the whole sidewalk. I know we've been talking about the sidewalk for a while, so without engineering, has engineering reviewed it, Paul? Do you know?
Not that I'm aware of.
Yeah, so I don't, I'm not comfortable saying that it's an acceptable sidewalk or not. I just, I don't know.
The photos have now made it to the last member of the board, so he's reviewing those, and then they'll be deposited with the city staff. So are there any, at this time, are there any motions that a board member would make? Any further questions or comments? Mr. Sanzico?
This is, I'm very conflicted on this matter. It's, I, you know, I, you look at this site, we're talking about additional five feet on the lot. It's a 60-foot lot. We're talking about 300 square feet, plus or minus, and you're talking about additional five feet from allowing this, Mr. Pardon, to build two homes on a lot to allow, to require a variance. Like, you know, I, like I said, I'm very conflicted. I, in fact, I've talked, asked Mr. Savadon, our planning director, to, to review the ordinance and ask the, to bring this up as one of the amendments to our current zoning ordinance to allow for smaller lot sizes on existing lots, existing subdivisions. I just don't think it's, it's fair for, you know, if ninety, if the majority of the homes in this, in this subdivision are, would be noncompliant or nonconforming, then to not allow a home or a petitioner not to be allowed to build a site. But on the other hand, I just don't see a hardship. You know, I think it, it would provide a safer access for the kid, children to go to the school. You know, I appreciate what Mr. Pardon is proposing, but on the, but like I said, on the other hand, I just don't see a hardship, and I, I can't really support the variance.
Thank you. I would just like to make a quick comment that if you read what's presented in our board, I mean, our board packet 4A, it states that A, 305.5 square foot variance, is being requested, but as Mr. Evans said in his presentation to us, it's times two.
Right, for each line.
Right. So, I mean, I just wanted to kind of clarify to anyone who's reading this online at home now or in the future, that it's really not one, it's two that we're addressing here tonight. So I think that clarity is important. I would have to state, Mr. Sanzico, that I agree with you, and if there's a way to streamline in the future, and you have the ability to, you know, maybe start the process through the Planning Commission with the city, you know, Planning Commission Director, you know, working, you know, concurrently with you on that, I certainly think that that's something we should perhaps encourage, but I don't see the hardship. And the way the ordinance is written with that hardship, we have to look for a hardship or we're instructed essentially not to approve anything without one. How do you do that here? And we just, in light of the fact that I believe that the speaker during the public hearing addressed the fact that we have paperwork right in front of us that, or in our, in our minutes, that we just rejected the 1078 Boyd variance request just at last meeting here just about 30 days ago, and that was slightly less of a variance request. So how do you?
Just a.
Look at the history of what this board has just done and then turn around and approve this. I'm just stating that rhetorically, but I don't see how I could support a motion to for approval here tonight. Anyone else? Mr. Vice Chairman Eisenbacher?
I share the difficulty in this decision with my colleagues. One thing I've noticed in traveling through this neighborhood, which it's in relatively close proximity to my house, so I end up bicycling through this neighborhood quite often, and on Heartland, which is one street away to the south, there's a brand-new house that's being constructed. It looks like in the last couple of days, they just finished the majority of the framing on it, and it, it's a Bigfoot that took up two lots. So they took two lots and combined them, put in a nice, big, big house, three-car garage. So the trend may be in this neighborhood to combine lots instead of splitting them. That would be a big change to the character of the neighborhood as opposed to what is there now, and that's part of my, the difficulty. Do we grant a variance and allow two small houses which matches the character of the neighborhood, or say no, follow the rules, do it exactly as is planned, and ends up being a Bigfoot house, as what happened on the one street away?
I would just, you know, kind of to Vice Chairman Eisenbacher's comment, just remind everyone that without a variance request approval, a house can certainly be built on this parcel. And the size is up to the developer within certain parameters that the city council has approved and the planning commission enforces. So it's not like a denial here is denying a home being built there. It might be larger than the residents may like, but that is the ordinance, and there is democratic recourse where the citizens can talk to council, put, you know, bug in councils here and have it changed to their satisfaction for smaller homes or, you know, as Vice Chairman Eisenbacher said, there's maybe perhaps a new trend, and maybe that things could be incorporated into that. But this certainly is not, you know, a no vote, in my opinion, here. It is not against economic development in Troy. It's not against small business developers who want to do good things for the city, but I, once again, just can't see the hardship. Mr. Sanzico?
Yeah, it's interesting what Mr. Eisenbacher's comments are, but I believe the studies in, in the past in Troy and, and a lot of the issues that are in front of the planning commission are that the, the smaller lots and smaller homes are more favorable now, and people are looking forward to smaller homes in our community. In fact, there, there is a need for smaller homes. There's a lot more empty nesters, you know, single homeowners. Even the apartments, we're finding that apartments that we're approving are much smaller sizes, studio apartments, the Amber Apartments around the corner, and it's just, in fact, the, the new study that we're proposing for this community center sites are looking at, you know, smaller lot sizes and a mixed use for smaller-sized homes. In fact, the average family now in Southeastern Michigan, I think, is roughly two and a half people, so it's, it's going down. I mean, 30, 40 years ago was three and a half. So it's, you can see that the trends are towards smaller families, smaller homes, and empty nesters. So I, I'm sure the smaller homes would sell very well. There's a very, I'm sure there's a market for it, and, you know, it's, obviously, you can always go bigger, but I think the smaller home is a trend that we'll be seeing, and the bigger homes that we have now are, may be harder to sell in the future if there's a smaller market for them.
Anyone else? Would like, someone like to make a motion? Mr. Sanzico?
I move that we deny the proposed request for variance.
Motion made, is her second? I'll second the motion. So the Sanzico-Clark motion is before the board, or is there any discussion on the Hearing none, Mr. Evans, I believe we're prepared to vote.
Mr. Desmond?
Yes.
Mr. Eisenbacher?
Yes.
Mr. Neal?
Yes.
Mr. Lambert?
No.
Mr. Sanzico?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes. The motion, or the petitioner's request has been denied by this board, and that matter is now finally done before us on this particular agenda item. Now I move on to item five, communications. Mr. Evans, can you address that, or address this issue? Are there any communications for the board?
No communications.
Okay, thank you. Any miscellaneous business before the board tonight? Would anyone like to bring anything forward? Seeing, Mr. Lambert?
Just kind of a follow-up to what we've been talking about, the fact that we've had several meetings without a full board, and, and I know that city council's been having problems filling a lot of board positions, so I think it's, we need to maybe individually contact the mayor pro temp who kind of is in charge of most of the appointments and say, we've got to get one more alternate in here because it's kind of unfair both to petitioners and to the citizens to have items continuing to be postponed because we don't have a full board. So Mr. Pennington, I believe, is kind of in charge of that right now on city council, so send him an email or give him a call and say, hey, we need another alternate on here.
Don't hesitate to recruit friends and neighbors and relatives. You know someone who might be interested, because it is hard to fill the positions.
For, yeah, because we're down one alternate, right? But we do have a full appointment of members, so that's really another, perhaps. Moving on to item number seven, public comment. I'd like to open up the podium for members of the public who would like to address the board on any matter. Please. Please identify yourself once again.
I spoke at the end of the June.
Please identify yourself again.
Oh, again. Diana Lottie. I want to put, say, 1321. I'm sorry. 1308 Boyd. I spoke at the end of the June meeting, and I just wanted to restate myself at the end of this meeting. I'm a founding member of the Friends of Troy seniors, and we are a huge proponent of smaller homes here in the City of Troy for older individuals that want to get out of their colonials and their larger ranches, but I think there's a place for them, perhaps the cluster homes that are being talked about now in an appropriate area. It's just that, that old neighborhood that we live in is so congested, and the streets are so narrow, it just doesn't seem the right place to put more homes in there, and that's why we have been against it. But please, we, I am a big proponent of smaller homes for the City of Troy, and if there's anything the Friends of Troy seniors can do to help in this regard, we would be happy to. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else who would like to address the board? So we'll close that portion out, and right eight o'clock sharp, I will adjourn until our August regularly scheduled meeting. Thank you very much.